Well, thank you very much, David. It's a real pleasure to be here. I appreciate the turnout. I see so many people I've known before and many that I don't. But I appreciate the introduction and the reading. I now no longer have to read the book. But I also wanted to say a few words about my friends Charlie and Mirt. Charlie is a member, sort of a somewhat absent member, of a group called the Portland Flyers. There are those of us who fly out of Portland on a regular basis on Monday morning and come back usually Thursday night. And Charlie seems absent mostly these days, and we miss him. We organize a dinner once a year in Washington for this little group that has no other real bond except that we are all from Maine and we fly in the same flights over and over again, and we sit in the same seats. We're pretty close to each other. But I've known Charlie for a very long time. I have great admiration for him, and I thank you for being here. Mirt Henry, I have known since I've known anyone except my parents because he and Harriet were such good friends of my parents, and I consider him a good friend as well. I'm amazed at his joy of living and his intellect and his engagement in the community. And we are all a Boden group, so this is part of the reason. But, Mirt, it's great to have you here. So what I thought I would do... Oh, I want to say one other thing. She who is not here, Margaret Chase Smith. Pat McGowan, when I was running for governor in 1993 and 94, Pat McGowan said to me, "You ought to go talk to Margaret Chase Smith." And she was... I think she died the next year. She was deep into her 90s. And I came up here and looked around at the place with all of its political memorabilia and sat and talked with her. And she told me about the time when Dwight Eisenhower came here for a fundraiser on the banks of the river. And I thought, I bet that was a very different fundraiser with a much lower, you know, individual contribution required. And she told me that if you... She said to me, "Well, if you pay attention to what the people need and want, you'll do just fine." And I thought that was about as good advice as anyone could get. And she is an inspiration because she was an independent thinker and made a lasting contribution not only to Maine but to this country. So why does someone spend four years, weekends, evenings, doing something like this? I loved writing this book. It was time-consuming. It was... I do describe it as fun. My wife is glad that it's done. But you write, I think, out of some frustration. Cindy will talk about some frustration later. But you write out of some frustration. Part of my frustration was that you can't, as a candidate, you can't explain what you are trying to do very effectively and get it across. If a member of the press calls you, as I was often called, and says... And asks me a question about a particular pending issue, one question, and I give an answer, and the response is, "Well, I think that's all I have for now," you know the entire story was written except for one little place which said, "Quotation from Tom Allen." He gets the quotation. So you have no real impact on the shaping of the story, and you don't really get to explain yourself. And trust me, the TV ads don't work at that either. And so partly, this was an effort to explain what's going on in Congress from the inside and the particular, you know, satisfactions and multiple frustrations of the job, but also the excitement of being engaged in the great issues of the day. It was also because I didn't like what people were writing about Congress when they tried to explain the gridlock. Older, more senior members and a lot of commentators would say, "Well, if only members of Congress, Republicans and Democrats, would have dinner together and stay here in Washington on the weekends, you'd get along, you'd know each other, and Congress would work much better." For most of us, that didn't make any sense at all. Because, you know, I traveled with Republicans. I worked on... Yeah, I worked out in the gym with them. We went overseas. I enjoyed their company. It wasn't that we weren't personally incompatible. It's that we thought so differently about our jobs and what we were supposed to do that there was so much less common ground than there used to be. And that was the problem, and that's part of the reason why I started writing this book. And the title comes from a quotation from Friedrich Nietzsche. "Convictions are more dangerous enemies of truth than lies." Convictions are more dangerous enemies of truth than lies. Now, we say right at the beginning, we are all Republicans, Democrats, liberals, conservatives, all people are very easily capable. And usually, we seize on things that we believe to be true, and then we take in the evidence that supports those views, and we push away the evidence that doesn't. But that is not the way the founders thought that the legislative process should work. And it's not the way... And it is terribly destructive to the institution. So, setting aside the frustrations, who did I write this book for? I wrote it for Democrats who seemed unable to understand that Republicans in Congress... And let me make sure... I'm talking about Republicans in Congress, the people I dealt with. I'll say in a few minutes why Maine is so very different. But Republicans in Congress who seemed to some Democrats to have no coherent values other than power. And I wrote this partly to say, right at the core, the quintessential American value is self-reliance. And that's at the core of the Republican philosophy and also a major factor in the hostility to government, which is not a necessary corollary of self-reliance but has become one. So I wrote for Democrats... I wanted Democrats to understand that. I also wrote it for Republicans in the hopes that some would understand that if a party comes to believe and act on a conviction that tax cuts pay for themselves when they don't, or that climate science isn't proven when, for all practical purposes, it is, that that party is in danger and that those people who are engaged in that party ought to be able... ought to work toward getting a more evidence-based policy. Because otherwise, if we're not evidence-based on both sides, we... the capacity to talk across the aisle is really much weaker. The other day, let me... I'm going to read one piece here. I wrote specifically not about those issues, not about those social issues which, you know, frankly, we're not going to agree on. People tend to be on one side or the other. It's very hard to agree on those. I wrote about the big ones: the budget and taxes, the war in Iraq, how we got in and what happened there, health care and climate change. These big, major issues of my time in Congress, three of which certainly continue today. So let me read... Let me just read this part. "These four topics—budget, taxes, Iraq, health care, climate change—involve different issues, evidence, and approaches. Yet in Congress, they seem to be part of a whole, as if something not immediately apparent tied them all together. Otherwise, the two parties would not have been so fiercely divided on such disparate issues, disparate matters. Interest-group politics can explain some of the differences. Each party appeals to and is supported by different combinations of business, labor, and other organized activists. But interest-group politics is now overwhelmed by worldview politics, a widening, hardening conflict between those who believe that the mission of government is to advance the common good and those who believe government is an obstacle to that end. If this is true, at one level, all domestic issues merge into one, an unproductive, irreconcilable ideological conflict about government itself. Ultimately, however, this conflict is less about the role of government than the enduring tension between individualism and community in American politics and culture, and therefore as much about the electorate as our representatives." Yesterday, I was speaking to two classes at Cape Elizabeth High School, and, you know, all but a handful of them had never voted. But they were interested. They did pretty well asking some questions. But I said to them, "There are two big ideas that define America, that define who we are. One of them is self-reliance, individualism." I said to them, "Your parents and others tell you you can be anyone you want to be if you work hard enough. You need to stand on your own two feet. You need to... You know, you are the sort of the master of your own future." And yet, they are also told by their coaches that there's no "I" in team, and that if you are starting a business and you walk into a bookstore and you want to get some books on how to run a business, it's all about developing a mission and building a team around that mission and all working together. And our religious and civic organizations are all about taking care of each other. There's a wonderful book by a man named Jonathan Haidt that came out last year. And I got... It came out so late in the process of my writing that though I mention it, I don't spend much time with it. But you'll love the title. "The Righteous Mind: Why Good People Are Divided by Religion and Politics." And it's a wonderful book because basically, when you're through with that book, you think, "Oh, now I understand why some other people think differently than I do. And now I kind of understand how I think, but I'm missing some things." It's just a wonderful book in terms of, as you think about how it applies to yourself. So let me... What I'd like to do is bounce through these three issues, a little bit about the convictions that I think are dangerous and why, and then wrap it up with a comment about the last two chapters. Because to me, the last two chapters are the heart of the book. They're an attempt to explain by people who have done research on us, human beings, how we think, how much our worldviews are driven, you know, not as much by reason as we think, but a whole lot by emotion and our particular perspective, to understand how that fits with the current problem we're in. Let me start with the budget and taxes. When I was on the Budget Committee for four years, I worked with Paul Ryan. I knew Paul Ryan. Paul Ryan is... I give him more attention here than anyone else, and I wrote virtually all of it before he was nominated. Because Paul is a fascinating guy. He is a very warm, generous, you know, very nice guy. You can't help but like him. But, boy, he just has the conviction that if government is smaller, it will follow as the night to day that the public will be better off. Now, he doesn't present evidence, but he believes that. He believes that absolutely. And that's why it was so puzzling when... Because in the Budget Committee, you normally... And in other areas, you're supposed to be making trade-offs. Very hard for Paul to make compromises because he grew up with, he believes in, he says the principal reason he got involved in politics is Zain Rand and her books because he was so enthralled by her philosophy of individualism. But she's out there... She's out there pretty far. And really, I think that if you understand Republican economics, this... Again, I'm not talking about Maine. I'm really talking about what has taken over the Republican caucus in the US Congress. They are so committed to driving down both ends of government, the expenditures and the taxation, determined to drive them down. And as a result, the kind of horse trading that used to go on when... In earlier times, doesn't happen anymore. Give you two examples. When Richard Nixon was president, he signed the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, the Endangered Species Act, created the EPA. When Ronald Reagan was president, he did that big tax cut in 1981. And then, as Bruce Bartlet, one of his advisors, has written, he did 11 tax increases after that. I mean, Reagan may be sort of, for conservatives, you know, the model of what a president should be. And rhetorically, he was out there. But he governed as a pragmatist. And I think people have lost that sense of pragmatism, certainly the last Bush administration did. They never... They passed five major tax cuts, which, as in the book I point out, the single reason... The single largest reason why our deficits are what they are today, even today, 10 years later, is the tax cuts of '01 and '03, still. And so they were, in my opinion, so excessive. And they were excessive in spite of the evidence that was available from economists and from the economic models that were available at the time they were passed. I mean, there was danger there when they were passed, and the danger has come to the end. I quote Mitch McConnell a couple times in here. He's really good copy. And in 2010, to give you one example, in 2010, he said to the press, "The Bush tax cuts, those two tax cuts, they stimulated the economy so much that they increased revenue." Now, the Congressional Budget Office, a year later, when it really had 10 years to work with, they looked back and they said, "No." I mean, they had been making projections all the way, but the Bush tax cuts in those years reduced revenues, federal revenues, over that 10-year period by about $2.9 trillion. Now, the difference between a $1 increase and a $2.9 trillion decrease is a pretty big gap. And so one of the questions, and I take... I mean this as a serious question, is, "Why did he say that? Did he believe it? Or did he not believe it? And which is worse?" I mean, so... But that's what I'm trying to get. Why do we think the way we do when we think politically? And I will say that, in my opinion, if you are a small government conservative... I don't mean a deficit hawk. Jerry Moran is now in the Senate from Nebraska. In about '05, I was walking with him one time, and he said... I said, "You must be having a real battle in your caucus between your deficit hawks and your tax cutters." And he said, "We don't have any deficit hawks left." But that was the mood of the moment. That was the mood of the moment. And I think that... So what we need to have to get back to a place where mainstream economics matters to our debates on budget and taxes. And so that's a piece of what I have been trying to do. Let me skip quickly to Iraq. I'll say just two things about the decision to go into Iraq, which I think was a terrible mistake. Larry Pope, my unofficial Boden friend and my unofficial advisor on Iraq is in back of the room. So if any, you correct me, Larry, if I get this wrong. But the single most stunning thing to me about that whole policy was that the Bush administration never held a meeting of the National Security Council to discuss whether or not to invade Iraq. Now, you think about the major decisions that you've made in your lifetime, or if you're in a business, your business decisions. You think about almost any major decision. You would normally sit down and try to figure out the pros and cons, try to figure out whether there are alternatives, and they didn't do that, as Colin Powell admits in one of his latest books. They never had a meeting to discuss whether or not to invade. All the meetings assumed the invasion and were about how to do it. And then, when you get to the assumptions... Donald Rumsfeld gave a speech just before the invasion about kind of why we were doing it and why he wanted to pull out within a few months. And he said, based in so many words, he said, "We have to pull out right away because otherwise we'll create a culture of dependency among the Iraqis." Now, the section that Charlie Cragan quoted to you, that culture of dependency. "If self-reliance is a primary American virtue"—I would say for everyone, but let's say for conservatives especially—"then dependency is the primary fear." And he trimmed down that force below what the US military had always recommended for an invasion of Iraq because he wanted us to get out quickly. And the consequence of that decision... And he forced Tommy Franks, basically, to keep dropping the number of troops. The consequence of that decision was, you can't measure it, but an additional amount of chaos in Iraq and the reconstruction... Making reconstruction even more difficult than would be otherwise. But you come back... He was so set, so much afraid of dependency, that he ignored the State Department, all the warnings that Colin Powell's people gave, all the plans they developed for the reconstruction. He just set those aside, and we wound up in a mess far greater than it needed to be. Flip to health care. The only thing I'll say here is that the interesting thing about health care... Mitch McConnell again. After the bill had been passed, or, well, or I think it was after or just before... Remember, the Republicans were all about... They kept saying, "We're going to repeal and replace Obamacare." And the Obamacare was projected to cover 33 million people, an additional 33 people. That was 33 million people. But there never was a plan to replace. There'd never even been a plan to compete with something that would deal with those three basic issues: quality, cost, and coverage. And so McConnell is pressed three times by... On Fox News, I mean, this is not MSNBC, it's Fox News, Chris Wallace. And he's pressed three times to say, "Well, what about the 30 million people that Obamacare is projected to cover? What are you going to do about them?" And the first time, he said, "That's not the issue." And he's asked again, and he says, "That's not the issue." And the third time, he basically says the same thing and says, "I tell you what, we are not going to become like one of those Western European countries." Now, the Western European countries cover everyone at, on an average, 2/3 the cost of the US system with better health outcomes. So why does he think that this is such a terrible thing to expand health care coverage? I think we come back again to dependency, to this firm conviction that if government has more of a role, more of a regulatory role in the health care system, it will somehow diminish human freedom more than it will increase human opportunity. And for Democrats, that's incomprehensible. So when you think about these different issues, if you're on one side and you basically say, "We can't increase... Do any more regulation than we are, or we can't do any more new programs or spend more money than we are today." And someone across the aisle is saying, "We have nearly 50 million people without health care coverage in a system that's way too expensive. We've got to do something." There's no common ground to talk. And so I think we come back again, not just to the role of government. That seems to me like one of these... That's a green eye shade kind of thing. You can imagine people arguing about the role of government and sitting down and saying, "Well, I think they should do this, or I should think they should do that." But that isn't where our political debates are. Our political debates are intense, emotional, fierce, and you know what? If you go inside the Republican caucus in the Congress or inside the Democratic caucus, they are fierce. They are fierce debates internally. And you know why? Because the people in there believe what they believe. They didn't go there just to be there on either side of the aisle. They went there to do things, but the things they're trying to do are so different that they can't even... They have enough trouble in their own caucuses. But once they're trying to negotiate across the aisle, they believe such different things that it's very hard to find any accommodation on these major issues. So let me come finally to climate change. This one ought to be easy, but there's so much money by the Koch Brothers and others, and earlier by ExxonMobil and the oil companies over a period of years, that was poured into creating doubt about the science and the scientific consensus on climate change, that now you have a public that is more divided. If the PowerPoint had been working, I would show you a couple of slides. One is, out in Hawaii at Mauna Loa, for since the late '50s, they have been taking readings of carbon dioxide concentrations in the atmosphere, and there's an annual variation. And ever since then, it goes... It just goes up and up and up and up and up and up. Well, a number of years ago, they started... They realized something else is going on in the oceans. Because that carbon dioxide from human emissions goes up, but it comes down. And when it comes down, about 1/3 of all of the carbon emissions since the beginning of the industrial era, about 1/3 of them have gone into the oceans where they react with seawater and form carbonic acid and make the ocean more acidic. And the rate at which the ocean is becoming more acidic is the fastest, at least, in the last 60 million years and maybe the last 300 million years. And nobody knows. We know that if you take these tiny organisms that are at the bottom of the food chain and you put them in water that is as acidic as the oceans will be in 2050, they dissolve. They can't be... These tiny shell form at the bottom of the food chain. So we don't... There's a lot we don't know, but we know that at oyster larvae farm... Two big oyster larvae farms in Washington and Oregon in 2007, they take water into... They always operated by taking water into the tanks and then growing the larvae and then selling them to oyster farmers up and down the West Coast. These are the two biggest operations in the US. And in '07, the larvae just started dying, and they couldn't figure out what it was until they did some tests and found out that the seawater they were taking in was more acidic than it had ever been before. And so they had to treat it. Now, treating seawater is a temporary and local thing. But there is now... If we... If there were no carbon emissions from today forward, the ocean would become more acidic for the next 50-plus years. So this issue, which has an impact in the Gulf of Maine, not just on the West Coast, but it has an impact around the world, the very bottom of the food chain, if there's a die-off there, the consequences for protein for human beings at the top of the food chain, particularly in less developed areas, is very serious. It is very, very serious. I'm on the board of the Ocean Conservancy, and we have a big... You know, one of our major projects is ocean acidification. It's an issue that not many people in the public know about, but it is what is sometimes called "the other carbon problem." But it's a long-term problem. And that's, in our political system right now, because it's not grounded in evidence and debate of this kind, is not capable of dealing effectively with long-term issues. And so what I believe is that... I come back to why I wrote this book and what I hope to achieve. I do believe that unless we get back to a real understanding of what I would say is the beginning, or as close as you can get to it, the beginning of the causal chain of political reasoning. If we don't have a debate down there, then we're not going to solve these practical problems that we have at the top. Because what's really going on with climate change and the Koch Brothers... The guy who runs the Koch Brothers lobbying operation has confirmed this. He said, "If the government... If climate change... If you do something about climate change, the government has more control over the economy." So you come back to this thing about government, which is ultimately about individualism and community, what we should do together, what we should do on our own. And that issue is fundamental to who we are as Americans and fundamental to our ability to pass on to our kids a world, a country, and a democracy that will work for them better than it's working right now. The last two chapters, what I try to do is I try to dive into those people who have written a lot about this kind of difference of opinion across party aisles, across the aisles. You know, one of them is George Lakoff. He said, "A lot of these differences are related"—he didn't say "caused by"—but "related to differences in theories about how we should raise our children." Isaiah Berlin, who was the political philosopher at Oxford when I was there, once wrote an essay called "The Hedgehog and the Fox." And I think this is... I wrote it 40 years ago or more. And still, it's sort of shaped a little bit of the way I look at the world. And this is not a commentary on either category of human beings, but some people, frankly, see the world in black and white. Some of us see it in shades of gray. That difference... We're just wired, you know? A lot of that is... That's not learning. That's... We're just wired that way, I think, in many ways. And what he said about Tolstoy was that the hedgehog and the fox... The phrase comes from a Greek fragment, and it is, "The hedgehog... The fox knows many things. The hedgehog knows one big thing." And what Berlin was saying, using... And what Berlin was saying, using that analogy, he says, "People are divided between those who want, who believe in and see the world within a certain structured way and fit, interpret the world. They need some sort of unified vision of how the world works." And then there are others who just accept or revel in its diversity and contradictions and all our human peculiarities. And he said, "Tolstoy was a fox, but he wanted to be a hedgehog. He wanted to have, he wanted to, he, he understood life and all of its complications and all its diversity and all its inconsistencies, but he wanted to have an overarching political theory." And if, 35 years after I read "The Hedgehog and the Fox," I actually went back and read "War and Peace." I had some long plane trips when I was in Congress, and, and it was exactly, that's, that explained it to me, because at the end, and I don't expect, you know, you have to spend some time to get through it, but the, at the end, Tolstoy is basically saying, "Well, the way we have to all pull together is that all the good people in the world need to get together and do the right thing." And I thought, "Well, who decides who are the good people?" You know, it gets, it gets a little, it gets a little complicated. Let me finish with this. I, I finished with a reading from Reinhold Niebuhr, and it was one of many readings I did at a, the Faith and Politics Reflection Group, which I attended for about, one of several, about, a Faith and Politics Institute in Washington does a reflection group for, for members of Congress. And we used to be bipartisan, and then we wound up being mostly all Democratic, but we were from all sorts of different religions. But, but that quotation, I'm not gonna read it, but it is basically about, "You have to have hope, you have to have faith, you have to be able to believe that, that we will work through these issues." I believe we will. I actually believe that no trend continues forever, and this polarization is a, a low point in our democracy, but if we understand, if we come to understand that these values, self-reliance, community, that these values are both quintessential American values, and we have to treat them as both equally important in how we operate in the world. We do that in much of our private lives, but for some reason, now, we're having trouble having that view across a broad enough group of people who are in elective office, particularly in Washington. We do better here. And we do better here, frankly, I think, I'll finish. We do better here because our leading Republican candidates in Maine have never bought into this, the more extreme rhetoric. You never hear Susan or Olympia say, "Tax cuts pay for themselves, climate science isn't proven." They don't go there, and therefore, I think they are able to have conversations across the aisle that many of their colleagues in the Republican caucus in the Senate have not been able to do. So, that's why, when I come back here, I, I'm proud to be in a place where Margaret J. Smith lived, and where she has left her legacy, because it is a vitally important legacy, not just for the state of Maine, but for the country. Thank you.